Everybody ready?
Yep.
Okay, welcome everyone to our wonderful workshop. Open, first is the update on the update on the CCA agreement. We was called NYSERTA, got some answers from them. I talked to John and I talked to John again last night. He said it was a no brainer, especially since they're gonna change the change that wording. He did, one thing he did bring up was that if we did that hydro that we should separate that somehow. So, I don't know if that would interfere with this or if that would overlap this or if there were savings that we don't want them as part of that.
Right, well that would be a, that would be taken as rental, I think, if we took it that way. The money that the DQ would be giving us, like we'll have to word it.
And I guess that's not even a done deal, so.
No.
So that was, so if you wanna, anything you've heard from NYSERTA?
No, nothing more.
Okay. So, I'd like to-
Did you get the thing from Glenn that said they were filing all the changes off?
Yeah, he said they would change, make the changes, yeah.
Okay.
So, do you wanna make the, make the motion?
I'd like to make a motion. We pass the resolution to hire Jewel as our CCA manager.
I'll second that, or, I'll second that. Any discussion?
Is the resolution to hire Jewel or is the resolution, resolution to sign the CCA?
No, it's to hire Jewel as the-
Hire Jewel.
Okay.
As our, I don't know what they're, whether they considered our-
Administrator?
Yeah, our CCA administrator, that's the official title.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is Resolution thirty-one dash two thousand seventeen. Amanda Village calls for procurement policy. Fran, we had, as I said last meeting, we had, we had, oh no, that was actually a different one. This is the, when we redid our procurement policy, the numbers that we came up with. There was not enough kind of instructions or on how to proceed as far as the different amounts go. So, this indicates what has to be done and by who. Fran went over that if you wanna elaborate.
Different from what was on the last procurement policy. We did add, previously only the small amounts between less than three thousand and greater than, it was seven hundred, it's not six ninety-nine. Needed the approval of the mayor of the board. We did not put that in all the other amounts, so that has now been added. For all, for every, every bullet point except for the first one. For the purchase contract, any amounts less than seven hundred would be left to the discretion and I apologize, it should say, of the authorized purchaser. So, we'll just add that in and I'll tell you. We changed the amounts in each bullet point, so the greater than is a dollar less than the previous amount, so it covers everything. So, it's greater than six ninety-nine instead of greater than seven hundred, so we're all covered. Each bullet point has the approval of the mayor or the board of trustees. Except as we got to the fourth bullet point in the purchase contracts, less than twenty thousand but greater than four nine nine nine. It was the approval by the board of trustees. We pulled out approval by the mayor or board of trustees because that gives the mayor authorization to approve it on his own and we didn't think that was a smart thing to do. Okay, and that's about all we have done on this. Anything over the twenty thousand in the purchase contracts and over the thirty-five thousand in the public works, works contract is covered by the general, general law, general state law, so, general municipal law, so we didn't have to go into that amount. Other than that, everything else that was in this was here before. And in each, in each bullet point, we also added the recommendation of the purchaser as part of the requirements. So, that's about where we, the adjustments that were made. I was working with Jeff on this today and Marie had given me what I forgot I was supposed to be doing, so thank you Marie. So, therefore, do you want me to read the resolution?
No.
No, okay.
Make the motion and then we'll go through the roll call.
We will make the motion to-
Authorize the amending?
To, to resolve, authorizing the amending of the procurement policy. Resolution thirty-one of two thousand seventeen, authorizing the amending of the procurement policy. So, I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Oh, sorry.
Mayor Dave Morandi.
I vote aye.
Trustee Lynn Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Marie Early.
Yes.
Trustee Frances Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Steve Biloedup.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you for working on that. Next is to authorize the mayor to sign a letter to USDA for Chestnut Ridge apartments. As we discussed last week, but we really didn't have this supposed second letter. Jeff, our clerk, did look into that. We were sent the second letter, which was basically the same as the first letter and really didn't add much clarity as far as I could see. It still seems like it's a bit of a mystery what's going to happen up there. But, we felt that we should at least send a letter expressing our concern for the residents on Chestnut Ridge and the lack of affordable housing on this side of the county. So, Fran has worked on a letter that we will be sending. If you'd like to read it Fran, or-
Sure. It's addressed to Kim Bosley at the USDA, United States Department of Agriculture. Dear Ms. Bosley, it has come to our attention that the owners of the Chestnut Ridge Apartments in our village have applied to pay off the USDA loan ahead of schedule. According to your letter to the tenants of Chestnut Ridge, the owner then wishes to operate the apartment complex as conventional market rate apartments. While we're very grateful to the USDA and the owner of the Chestnut Ridge Apartments for providing affordable rental housing in our small village for the past years, we're very concerned about what will happen to the residents of the sixty-four apartments if the USDA allows the owners to convert this property to market rate apartments. You should be aware of the fact that Chestnut Ridge Apartments is the only affordable rental housing on the western side of Putnam County. In this small village, the residents of these apartments live within walking distance to all the services they need. Without these subsidized apartments, the low income, mostly elderly tenants who currently live in Chestnut Ridge will be forced to move into an unfamiliar environment. We are therefore requesting that you please consider very carefully the consequences of allowing the owner of Chestnut Ridge Apartments to operate them as market rate apartments. Not only will our current neighbors be negatively affected, there will no longer be any affordable rental housing on this side of the county. We would appreciate if you would keep this office informed of any further changes in the status of the Chestnut Ridge Apartments. Thank you Dave Morandi, Mayor.
It's a good letter Fran.
Thank you.
Make the motion.
I make a motion to authorize Mayor Morandi to sign the letter to the USDA.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
If I have one to sign or not? No, alright, I can do it tomorrow.
Okay. Yes, I do actually.
Next is approved continuation of building a department stipend for Jeff Vidakovic. It's twelve hundred and fifty dollars for six months. We said we'd review this after six months, which it is. So, we're here to discuss that. Jeff is, if you're in the office at all, is fielding a lot of questions and answering a lot of calls. Both people that are coming, stopping by on the phone regarding building code enforcement. So, I feel we should at least continue it for the remainder of this year. I am planning on calling a meeting with Jeff and Greg Warner and, and the other, the head of the HDRB, the chairs of HDRB and planning to kinda go over maybe the process and a little more and tighten things up. And I'm not sure if we'll need this after this year or not, but I feel Jeff's been pretty valuable to us over the last six months. Any other comments on that? Fran and Marie, you're here a lot. Sure you see a lot of people coming in.
And you work very closely with Greg.
Yeah.
So, it's a very symbiotic relationship. They both, they work together very well and assist one another. So, I think it's a good thing to continue this.
So, I will make a motion to continue and approve the twelve hundred and fifty dollars for next six month stipend for Jeff assisting in the building, the code enforcement.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next discussion of employee volunteers appreciation party. Who wants to start on that one? It's not that I don't appreciate, I don't know what, last year it was-
Well, it was terrible.
It was, it was a disaster.
The number of people who attended, it was a, it was a shame. All that food and, we had twenty people show up.
Do we, I don't know if we had that many people.
I don't think we did.
Aye, you know.
If you're counting us too, we did.
It could be because we moved the venue. You know, it's typically always been in the firehouse. We moved it to the American Legion home for some reason or other. People in the village don't like when we move something. You know, we tried that with the senior picnic one year and they didn't like it. You know, I don't know, I, I think, I'm not so concerned about the employees. I think the volunteers, and there are a lot of volunteers who work hard, deserve something at the holidays. I just don't know why.
My remembrance is we only had two volunteers that showed up. Danny and Kathy. The judge and Kathy were there. The police were all there, or a number of the police were there.
Mm-hmm. They were volunteers.
Arnie, Arnie, let me, police, Arnie and Mary were there. Mary, I was a volunteer and Mary was an employee. There were probably a couple of other people that I missed.
Yeah, like the remote.
Yeah.
But, and it lasted what, three to four hours? And all the food that went to waste.
Okay, so, the last one, Steve.
How did, how did we inform the volunteers last year? How did we invite people? Was it just an email or?
The volunteers, no, they, I believe they got a note in through their board. And it might, might have been an email. So, typically it's a note that's printed out and in, works on that and it's put through. But, we don't ask for RSVPs, not when, but we typically do a flyer.
Mm-hmm. Could we ask for RSVPs this time so that we could plan better?
What do you do differently? I mean, if we still get just ten, what does it-
Yeah, people don't RSVP that much anyway.
And that too, right.
Yeah.
It used to be held on a Saturday evening. Typically in the month of December. This year, last, yeah, this year it was in January or February. And it, I don't think, it definitely wasn't-
You know what we do in the springtime?
Huh?
Was it in the springtime?
Yeah, it was in the spring because I remember walking around outside with sand.
Right, yeah, it was March maybe?
Yeah, it was March.
But it originally was a holiday party. It used to always be December or January.
Yeah.
Yeah, we changed it last year, at the twelve.
It was February last year actually.
So, thoughts on continuing, or if we do, we're definitely not gonna get it together for December.
No, no, it'll be in December.
And this is, this is the party that the village pays for. We don't do donations for this one because we do ask the vendors for donations for the senior picnic. We asked them for donations for the Fourth of July, so the village typically will pay for this one. You know, we can look down at some of the amount of food, not because that might be cheaper, because we, we just had too much food.
And I believe that Nikon recommends not doing something like this for employees. I, I seem to remember an article that, where Nikon said it's okay for one class of people to do it, but not for the other. I suspect it's not for employees, but it's okay for volunteers. Do you remember that plan?
You know, I remember vaguely the discussion of it. I'm not sure that I agree with it, but I do remember it.
Right, I mean, but that the, the, the appearance is that when you, when it's for employees, it, it gives a bad appearance.
Yeah, but typically, I mean, any company I've worked for has had a holiday party. You know, it doesn't have to be a big fancy thing, but some kind of a holiday get together.
We're not gonna do that this year.
Well, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do holiday, but and I, I still think that we should do something for the volunteers.
The only, the only, well, the police were there. Mary was there, Kathy and Tom were there.
If we added the firehouse, you'd have the firemen there, some of them, and they are the fire people. And they are volunteers also. Yeah, you'll get, well-
None of the, I don't think any of the fire people came.
Not, not this year, not last.
They don't, they don't venture out of the firehouse.
Or bring it to them. But, just two, two years ago, I went to it because I got an invitation. Last year, I did not get an invitation to it at all, so I didn't even go.
We cut it down.
So, I'm, just some, once, when they, two years ago, I went to the firehouse, it was, it was a lot of people. The place was packed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember, I don't know when it was, but I know it was in the winter time. Because I remember I had to leave to go to my nephew's hockey game because it's senior, anyway. There was a lot of people there two years ago. Last year, I can't speak to it because it was invited.
I believe the thoughts were, and it may have been my thoughts, that we cut down inviting politicians and not, because we thought it should be for employees and volunteers. And so, we didn't, you know, we didn't-
Because it's fine.
Because when we invited the politicians, it went from Nelsonville all the way up to Carmel. You know, and some of you guys would come, but most, you know, most others wouldn't.
Yeah, I think I was the only one that came from-
Yeah. And you're always welcome to come.
We'll get you, we'll get you the-
That's okay. I just, just getting feedback from what I've pulled.
But, you know, it, it has been crowded when we've had it in the firehouse, so I think, you know, part of the fact that we moved it.
Can we move it back to the firehouse?
There's no reason we can't.
Alright, if somebody, if somebody wanna, I guess, if you wanna continue it, I feel, either way, I'd like to appreciate it. I think you could have just, I don't know, cocktail, wine, beer, whatever, and late food.
I think that was, that was one of the things that kept people away. They wanted, they wanted the Italian pasta dishes and, and wanting it. They didn't want, huh?
I'd say you take what you get.
Well, yeah, not around here. My thoughts sort of, you know, like wine, beer, and like finger foods and cookies was, you know, sort of a nice thing, but yes, they do like, they do like the whole.
As long as they show up to eat it.
They'll, they'll show up in the firehouse, they'll go to the- Do we wanna pick a Saturday in January and try for it?
I, I don't, what are we gonna do? Who's organizing? I'm not.
I'm putting in on it.
Um, if it's in January, we toward the end, I guess, yes? And what are we gonna have and how are we gonna do this?
What we have, I mean, I-
Firehouse.
Firehouse definitely. I can pull the list of who we invited. I think, I think.
Well, we, we have nothing, Town of Phillips Town doesn't have anything.
I know, you guys-
No, but they, the employees have a luncheon that they pay for themselves. That they, if they wanna go to it, they pay whatever the fee is. But, the Town of Phillips Town, we don't have any of that.
You didn't do anything for the volunteers, or do you have any vol, you don't have any volunteers?
Well, they have planning, well, they do.
Oh, yeah, they have, they have a lot.
Yeah, we, yeah, we got planning, but they, they get a stip, every one of them gets a stip. And of course, it's not, I'm not saying it's a lot of money, but, no, we, we, we don't have anything that I'm aware of.
You have a conservation group, don't you? You have a zoning board.
Zoning board, ZBA, we have a planning board, we have a conservation board.
Conservation.
We got people that have a conflict with the village, the, the, you know, there's a lot of different boards. But, as Phillips Town, we don't have any of that. Like I said, they have a luncheon, but they pay, people who are going pay for themselves.
Lynn, what, I don't wanna-
I'm willing to organize it, but, I'm, yeah, I'm willing to organize it. I'm just kinda thinking that January is such a humdrum time to have a party. You know? Can, can we just have an employee and volunteer appreciation party at a nicer time of year? I mean, do we have to have it in the wintertime?
Uh, definitely not.
Nope. We have the senior picnic, when do we do the-
Well, that's in September or October. Could we do it in the spring? When things are pretty?
You could.
Or, sometimes pretty in the spring?
Sure, I mean-
It can be dicey, but you know. And I think people are, I think people are more willing to get out and, and socialize too when the weather is starting to turn, you know.
Alright, so do you want a table or do you wanna think about that? And would you like to try to organize something at a nicer time? We could have it in Mayor's Park.
Well, either that or, you know, we could still maybe have it at the firehouse, but, you know, at a time when people are more likely to wanna socialize than January. I mean, I don't wanna go to parties in January. I wanna go home where it's warm. So, that's just me. But, though, I don't know, if we're showing appreciation to the, to the merchants and food service operators that have supported us in the past, the winter would be a good time.
No, this is not, this is not the, it's the volunteers, the village volunteers.
But, we're paying for food.
Right.
So, it's, it's a small amount. I mean, it's not massive.
I know. Okay.
Do you wanna work with Lynn on it and come up with a-
A proposal.
A proposal, go for it.
Yeah.
And we definitely won't get it done in, for December.
No, definitely won't be-
Unless you just wanna, we can buy beer and wine and-
There is no December left.
Okay.
It's gone.
Alright, so, let's move on, you guys.
Already going to a party.
Uh, next discussion of reduction in water and sewer amount for Emerson Pugh. From twenty-nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars to twenty-six oh two thirty-four. A reduction of three hundred and fifty-five twenty-seven. Marie, you were looking into this and-
Yep.
Reason for looking into this?
Yes, I developed a methodology. The bill was submitted based upon current water rate and current sewer rate. And the bill represented a time period spanning from nineteen ninety-six, when property was purchased, to two thousand, year in two thousand and six. And it, it, it covered approximately seven hundred thousand gallons of water. The interior water meter and the exterior water meter differed by approximately seven hundred thousand gallons. The rates charged by the village in nineteen ninety-six for water and is dramatically different than what it charges today. The rate change charged by the village for sewer use in nineteen ninety-six was non-existent. The village did not charge for sewer use in nineteen ninety-six. So, what I did is I assumed that the interior meter was correct. I calculated very easily the difference between the two. I then obtained the amount of use of the water recorded in the exterior water meter for each quarter between nineteen ninety-six and two thousand and six. I then ratioed and proportioned the amount of that difference against the difference between the interior and exterior water meters. And you came up with a percentage. That percentage was applied to the total number of gallons that are different. And I came up with probable actual usage for that period. I then applied to that the amount that was in effect at that quarter for water use and for sewer use. Very simple spreadsheet.
Okay, and why are we just looking at Pugh and not everyone?
I requested the top ten people who were hit by large bills between their interior meter and the exterior meter. And I was told that it was too difficult to obtain.
What would be?
To get me the data. I'm very willing to go over, reevaluate any other water situation using the same methodology.
Okay, I'm just, you know, I don't know why we're just going after them. I mean, I thought we put this to bed, I thought we had discussed this and we decided that, and they signed something stating that, that we're, they're gonna pay for this, this way.
Yes, and that's what my, my letter says. I, I am, as I say again, I'm very willing, you tell me which bills you want me to look into and I will go recalculate any one of those bills.
Well, I don't know, but what, I'm not gonna go looking through every bill in the village. I just, you know, it just seems like we're taking one person out of-
The intentions-
Many that have, I, I don't, I don't see any, I haven't seen any communication from them come across my desk after we've, you know, after the initial in which we came up with the total, which they signed and decide, and I thought that was the end of it, so.
I, I-
I don't know why we're revisiting it, I guess.
Um, I had been contacted by the Pugh's to look into it. And in evaluating it, the methodology that was used at the time, I think could have been more refined. The methodology assumes that the seven hundred thousand gallons was used when the water rate and the sewer rate were at the current rates. When, to use seven hundred thousand gallons, you gotta go over some period of time. It's not, it's not, didn't happen in two thousand and sixteen.
But, isn't this the same case with everyone that had a discrepancy?
Yes, and again, I am very willing to go over, back over and apply that methodology to anyone and everyone that, that has had a difference.
In some instances, some of the people who had discrepancies, one comes to mind. Purchased the house maybe five or six years ago. So, at the time that they purchased the house, there would have been a reading on that meet. There would have been an internal reading, so we would not have to go back all the way. We would just go back as far as when they purchased the house.
It's very simple, you just plug the numbers into the spreadsheet and you get a, an analysis of, of, of what the difference should be, could be.
This is similar to what we got for the Robinsons when they-
No, the Robinsons, the Robinson's analysis is incorrect in the sense that there was no sewer use rate in effect in nineteen ninety-eight. And, and the Robinson use is not prorated, it's not at all based upon what the meter read at various points over the twenty years. It assumes a straight use. And, and a straight, you can, you can do that, that, that's, that's fine. But, that, the, they are correct in their water use rate. They're, they're incorrect, implying they're overpaying in the sewer use rate. I believe the sewer use didn't come into effect until two thousand and seven. I have to go back to my notes.
Anybody else? I'm not sure, I mean, I, I thought we had discussed this and then, and they signed off on it and now we're bringing it back again. And if we're bringing it back for them, then I want every one of the, every one of the water bills looked into the same exact way.
I will do that.
Okay.
Absolutely, no problem. I need however, the cooperation of the water and sewer people that manage the data. That's not the water and sewer department. It's the, it's the people here who generate the bills. I need their cooperation to do this.
The people here, meaning Michelle and-
Ann and Jeff.
Well, let's see if they're willing to do this.
Okay.
If they're willing to undertake it, then we'll do it.
They, all they have to do is provide me with the, the readings every quarter during the period that the person owned the house. And I will take it from there. And if it means going through eight hundred bills, that's what I will do.
Okay.
I'm sorry, seven hundred and ninety-nine, I accept mine.
Mine's fine too, if you want.
I didn't even notice that, well, so mine's mine.
Okay, so, is everyone fine with that? If we, okay.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion to reduce the water and sewer of the Pugh's under the condition that everyone's bill is looked at, which Marie has offered to do, the help of Jeff and Ann. Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next discussion on firehouse drain. Stephen Smith sent us a email saying that the interior drain, when they wash the trucks or whatever, it's clogged. Wanted to have something done about that before winter. We talked to Greg, Greg looked at it, Greg says that problems happened before. He's not sure where it's even connected to, and if it's connected to anything. So, I talked to Greg today and he's going to- So, uh, I talked to Greg today and he's going to talk to a person he knows that has, uh, this business is a cam, oh. The business is to look into drains with cameras or whatever and so he's gonna contact him, see what the cost would be, to see if we can find where this drain actually goes. Um, Jeff, or Greg said that they've tried to snake it in the past and they've only gotten so far, so I don't know if that's the problem. It might go to a dry well, so anyway. The follow-up, uh, well, just followed up with Greg and Greg's gonna check this out and see if we can, for a reasonable amount of money, see where the drain goes and see if we can correct the problem. Um, and last is approval of minutes.
I made a motion to approve the minutes of November seventh.
I will second discussion.
Just one point. Um, Thomas on the second page, requested to repair a sidewalk at three dash five Stone Street. In the paragraph, you wrote thirty-three dash five Stone Street, so that just needs to be adjusted instead of the rest of it. Thank you.
Good on you, Brian.
I did receive two.
All in favor? Did you get an all?
What's that?
Did you get an all in favor?
Oh, all in favor? Sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Would be adjusted.
As amended, Brian.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I did get two emails from, uh, class mid, I guess, eighth graders from Howland. Um, I do put it on the agenda tonight. I asked them to follow up with me first, to maybe have a, a site meeting. They had requested to be looking into doing a skate park at Mayor's Park and also, uh, work on the, on the subway. I think they had talked to us before. I wasn't sure if the same class about painting.
They had.
So if it's the same class, I told them it'd be good to meet first before they've gotten too far into it.
What kind of a skate park?
Um, I don't know. They were gonna come up with a, it was a project they were all working on. They were gonna do a clay model or something.
You know, we had a skate park.
I did not know that.
That's right, at the Little Lake Field.
Oh, really?
Yeah, at the top.
Oh, what, the circle around?
Yes. In those days, in those days, that was a skate park.
In those days, it was actually skates too.
Those were this kind of skates that you clamped on and everything.
Right, yeah, with the key?
Right, like a radiator key.
Metal wheels? This is a little more advanced.
I remember it being ourselves. I think it was, it was Danielle who was working with the children on the, the artwork.
Okay, this was a different person then.
Okay, 'cause it was Danielle who would talk to us about it a couple of years ago.
The only reason I know about those kind of skates is I saw a television show.
Ed told, Ed told me.
Um, I, so I told them to, you know, meet down Mayor's Park, see where they wanted to do it before. Maybe that's, maybe it's a no-go, depending on where it is or whatever. And they were hoping to do the subway stuff and by the end of January, I said, well, with the weather, you're not gonna be shutting that down, so.
Not gonna. Um, I was in communication with Barbara Galazzo when she wanted to do an installation in the subway. Um, apparently she was not able to do it and make it work because of the constant dripping and moisture down there.
Yeah. Right.
So.
Yeah, it's definitely a problem.
Yeah. Hate to see all their effort just.
I know, that's why I told them we should meet.
Yeah.
Maybe they don't know the conditions. Well, they obviously did. Their letter was well-written and, and definitely. Uh, did meet with MTA and Neil Zuckerman, who's our local rep. And, uh, one, uh, one legislator from Putnam County to go over, they were going over both the Garrison and the Cold Spring train stations to see what improvements needed to be done. Um, so we did a whole walkthrough from the parking lot and to the overpass, the elevators, the condition. Of course, somebody had gotten there and cleaned it before.
Oh, yes.
It wasn't smelling of.
Where it's all rotted away and?
We, we looked at everything. We looked at the overpass, the, uh, the bridge itself and, uh, which is their property. And I asked them for a map on who's responsible for the, for the paving going from the corner of, uh, Market, you know, across the parking lot. So they were supposed to send that out to follow up, 'cause that's in need of repair for sure. Of course, they were saying that wasn't theirs. It was their, was ours.
I, yeah, I believe that we, we repaired it last week.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, I believe that is ours.
Gonna be dripped, ripped up when Greg does the work down there.
Yeah, they are, yeah, so nothing's gonna get done, but we'll have to, uh.
How old is that bridge anyway? I never.
Old enough to collapse.
I forget what they said.
It's all riveted together. It doesn't have bolts on it. It's pretty old.
Yeah, yes.
It, it's actually graded. Each bridge, each MTA bridge is graded. They, they give it a grade of one, two, three, four, five by the MTA and, and it is graded. And it's not on the endangered list.
Right, but it's on the next level up. It's very slightly above endangered, the state listed, and I checked it last year.
It's above, right.
But they also don't have a, a weight limit on it, 'cause that was one of the questions that came up when they worked on the boat clerk.
Right.
There should, there's no posted weight limits on that bridge?
Just go fast when you're on it.
Yeah.
So we're gonna get some kind of plan from them or proposal from the MTA's?
So I guess Neil was putting something together. We'll see where that goes. Um, cleaning was one of the big issues. It was also, there's a, the way they have the, uh, on the overpass, there's a, uh, the pedestrian overpass. There's gutters which are clogged, so all the waters are dripping down right by the elevator.
Yes, yes, yes.
It gets, in, in the winter, it gets really treacherous there and icy, and within the elevators too.
And the way they have it set up is terrible. It's like the design, there's no way you can get on, like a worker to get on there to ma, for maintenance purposes. So they need to bring a lift down and so, of course, this is costing commission money or they have to shut the trains down in order to get on there or to do any exterior washing on the pedestrian overpass. I said, well, what about the stairs going up and down? You don't have to shut that down to clean those.
Somebody broke the glass down there the other day.
Oh, yeah?
On the walkway going, the stairs going down on the, um, southbound side. One huge panel of glass was just like shattered all over the place.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I saw it, I saw it because I was walking down to go into the city, but by the time I came back, it was fixed. Of course, it got all over Facebook that it was a mess and who's supposed to clean it up?
Right.
You know, it was cleaned up within a couple of hours, so it wasn't a, it wasn't a major issue. But I mean, it was a major issue that it got smashed.
There's also a broken window on our subway.
And, yeah, you know, and I keep forgetting to look for them.
And, uh, it's in the, um, as you're going from the river to Main Street, um, as you go, as you go down, um, it's on the right-hand side. It almost looks like it's plexiglass from the break. It, it doesn't look like a typical, um, glass break, you know, but you'd have to have an enormous weight to break through plexiglass.
And I got, I got a call in the office.
And it's not safety glass, because safety glass would shatter, would, would, would crumble. It's not safety glass.
I got a call in the office a couple of weeks ago and I know I mentioned it to Jeff and I never followed up on it. From Metro North saying that they had gotten a call, I guess in the evening, saying that the glass was broken there, so they came and they cleaned up the glass. And then this person who called me when he went to his boss to say, okay, we need to fix it, the boss told him it wasn't their, their responsibility, it was ours. And so he was calling to tell us that they had cleaned it up so nobody would get hurt. But that was our responsibility and I did mention to Jeff, at least I think I did, but I never did follow up, so.
I apologize, Charlie.
That was ridiculous. I apologize for that.
And the Santa thing was really nice.
Yes, the fire company and, uh, rec department did a great job.
They did a great job. They really did. Um, I have true criticisms. They could have done a better job with the cookies. I really liked the chocolate chip cookies that they got. They didn't get the chocolate chip cookies this year. I was disappointed on that. They always have the hot chocolate and, and, and the cider. It's, it's great. The bandstand looked fantastic and the new sled that Santa arrived in was great.
It was really cute.
Yes, they, they did a great job.
Uh, a quick follow-up on the bathrooms. We're going to try to get at least one open for, till after the holiday season. Bruce is trying to find a plumber or something to come down, so we're trying to get at least one open and then, and then probably close them after that, but. Um, I think one just needs a seat. I think Russ actually went down and cleaned it up, cleaned them up, so. We'll see if we can get that one, you know, going again for the next month. Anything else?
I have two items. Um, the, you may remember that we received the HTRB chapter sixty-four last month.
Right.
And so, I believe that the steps on that are for the village board to discuss the, the document and see if there are any recommendations or changes. If not, then it needs to proceed to a public hearing, um, but from the village board. So I think the first step is to get that on, on the agenda, either for next week, which is probably not practical because it's the monthly meeting, or for the, the meeting the third Tuesday in Mon, in December, to have this.
To get the public hearing or?
No, 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 to, the first step would be make sure that we're in agreement with it.
Yeah. Okay.
Once we're in agreement with it, I believe that the second step is send it off to John for, uh, legal review.
Mm-hmm.
And then once he approves it, then it goes to a public hearing.
Okay, I'm good with that, so we'll put it on the third week?
Third week, right. And the second topic is, um, the West Point Foundry was approved and construction began on the Foundry in eighteen seventeen. It began operation in eighteen eighteen. So next year is the bicentennial of the West Point Foundry. The question is, should the village, and I, I'm sorry, Bob's not here, but should the village, uh, plan for something for the bicentennial? Same question should be asked of the town and of the Putnam History Museum, maybe the Chamber of Commerce. And that, if you go back to the early eighteen hundreds, we have a lot to be thankful for from the Foundry. We have the dam, such as it is, was constructed for the Foundry. It supplied the power to the Foundry and because of that, we're blessed with having an abundant source of fresh water.
Mine get yellow sometimes.
That's the pipes, not the water.
Thank you, thank you, Steve. Um, it put Cold Spring on the map. A number of very distinguished people visited Cold Spring, including Abraham Lincoln, to observe the Foundry during the height of the Civil War. Sorry, to observe the Foundry. Lincoln was here during the Civil War. So it's, it's really a significant, uh, uh, remembrance of a time when the village was in, probably in its heyday. I suspect that the population of the village at that time surpasses what surpassed what our population is now. So the question is, should the village do something for, to celebrate the bicentennial of the Foundry?
I would like to work on that. I would, I would assume we should contact, um, Sena Carson, who runs the Foundry.
Right.
And I would assume we should probably also contact West Point. Do we know what time of year we would wanna do something?
I would imagine we.
Sure, not a problem.
I would imagine that it would be a June, July event.
Spring, summer, in July. Uh, let me, um.
No, and, and of course, if you've visited the, the, the restored Foundry, you, you have seen the platform, which is where most of the armament was, uh, tested and, and, um, shot. You may remember the forest fire that we had in, across the river in nineteen ninety-nine. And as a result of the forest fire, I believe there were some unexploded ordinance, ordinance that exploded in nineteen ninety-nine, a hundred plus years after that ordinance was tested. So, yes, it was storm, I mean, they, they essentially, Storm King, take that. So, I, I, it's, it's just.
What kind of a celebration are you throwing?
Oh, beer and wine.
And cookies. Chocolate chip cookies.
Chocolate chip.
Cans.
Chocolate chip.
Cans, absolutely.
I, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there.
Just a quick thought, maybe, what, what about tying it in with the Fourth of July or that?
I, you know, that's sort of ran out of my mind. I think it's sort of take, I think we should do something different, separate from Fourth of July.
You wanna take away from Fourth of July.
No, I don't wanna take away from the West Point Foundry, bicentennial.
Why don't you and I throw some ideas around?
You might think about the Fourth, uh, we might be able, if we're teaming with Phillips Town and, and all the other places, maybe a better parade and, uh, something during the day and then work it, just, just the thought.
Mm-hmm. Thomas, there's beer and wine.
As long as there's a lot of beer and wine, 'cause that's what they did a lot back then, and I bet there were more bars in Cold Spring.
Well, there were more bars when we were growing up than there are now.
There were bars underneath the bars, from what I hear. Did you wanna do anything on this? I was passing.
No, pass on that one. Anything else?
I think the audience.
Anything from the ar- our audience?
We have a question.
What's that?
Liz, Liz House.
I just have a question for the mayor and anybody on the board who wants to comment, whether you guys as leaders of a municipality have any reaction to the tax bills that were passed by the House and the Senate? And are, would you think their impact might be on village and its taxpayers and what your thoughts in general might be on?
I've read about it much, as much as the congressmen have, so I can't really comment.
I think it'll have a huge impact on small businesses.
Definitely will.
And will make operating small businesses extremely difficult.
Can you vibrate a little?
The number of deductions that we're no longer allowed to, we will no longer be allowed to take is incredible.
That, that depends. I know I haven't read enough of it, um, but if you're filing a Schedule C or you're filing as a business, they're not saying that you're gonna lose deductions on that area. They're saying that the, the deductions for state and local taxes, the deductions for mortgages are coming up. But they didn't say off of the Schedule C, if that's the way you file. And that's, you know, so I don't know enough about that. I mean, if, if you're filing as a taxpayer who files, um, you know, standard deduction, you're gonna be ahead of it. You're gonna be in better shape. Or if you have a small, um, itemized deduction that's just barely over standard deduction and they're going to now double the standard deduction, then you will be ahead of it. You know, people, people in New York State, because we have high state and local taxes, are, are going to feel a bit of a pinch if they file, if they file a itemized deduction. But it depends on where you stand on that.
I really haven't, I haven't looked at it. I don't know if it's, how many people have actually reviewed it back in the day.
Yeah, and I, and I don't think half of the congressmen have reviewed it, so.
And I think it's going back to Congress and Congress is.
Well, it's going back to, it's going to the House next.
Well, yeah, it needs, the Senate and the House versions need to be.
Liz, I think, uh, not too, but I'd almost wish that, like, if you could, you could send us something, you know, just so we'll have some time to think it through before.
Well, I was gonna do that, then I got spur of the moment. Instead of sending you guys an email tonight, which you won't see, 'cause you're gonna be in a meeting anyway, why don't I just come to the meeting and ask? But I will send you an email.
Yeah, 'cause I, you know, I haven't like, I mean, I'm at the point where I turn off the TV and the news more than I turn it on, you know, so.
I think that, um, the, many, I'm gonna say trickle-down effects haven't yet been recognized or thought through. And, and how that will affect charitable organizations, um, nonprofits, um. I was, um, I met, I was at a meeting today and at least one of the people at the meeting who had just sold their house and moved to a rental was very glad that they did that already. They were fearful that the selling price might have been lower had they waited. Um, and of course now, they don't have to, they, they, they moved knowing that they would be losing their mortgage exemption, their mortgage, sorry, their mortgage interest exemption, um, their, um, real estate tax exemption. But they took that all into account when they, when they moved. And I, I think they, they feel that, that, that it was still a good move for them. Um, uh, but, um, they are very concerned about what it was. Um, uh, but, um, they are very concerned about what it will do to nonprofits, as I say, and, and, um, charitable organizations, what effect it will have. And I don't think we really understand that.
Agree with that.
Hmm?
I would agree with that.
And, and there may be other side chan- changes that, that we, we just don't see. Many of the nonprofits have experienced a huge influx of money this year. Who knows what will happen next year? I don't think we'll see the effects in two thousand eighteen, since it's not supposed to kick in until two thousand nineteen.
Anything else? We're going to the national. What about Russia and the, and the Olympics?
Oh, yeah, that was something.
Interesting.
Interesting story.
Putin says we're just doing it because he's, he's a former election.
Putin's gonna, Putin's gonna compete, did you say?
Yeah, he probably is.
He can, under a neutral flag.
Yes.
Yeah, the equestrian.
On that note.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?